Regular meeting for Monday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one to order. Please rise for our graduations, followed by homies, I would say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is Al Ward.
Here.
Mr. Bass, present. Dr. Borders, here. Mr. Martin, President, Mr. Myers. Absent. Is Allison Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Smith, here. And Mr. Jason Smith.
I'm present.
Very good, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And do we have modifications to the agenda?
I do not have any modifications to begin.
Mr. Secretary, do we have a motion to read?
I do have a motion to read.
Chair calls for a motion that the Heart of Research Board of Education modify the common time allotment for five minutes to three minutes for the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Education meeting.
So.
When moved by Mrs. Paul Ward, supported by Dr. Borders, do we have discussion? Hearing the scene of this call, roll.
Mr. Myers is absent. Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mrs. Allard?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, yes, and Mr. Bass.
Hello, yes.
Okay, motion is carried, six, seven.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome all of the attendants and for those, to those who are viewing the YouTube this evening, thank you for being with us. Like to congratulate the middle school robotics team. We're going to the state meet. Congratulations to that group and their advisors, Amy Smith and Dr. Jeremy Myers. And I'd like to thank my fellow board members for the last year of sitting on the board. You know, it's hard work with, there's some tough times and it's been a good year. We've made it through, so. And last, I'd like to wish our students, families and staff members and fellow board members a happy holiday season and wish you guys all the best, so. Thank you. And we'll move on to administration and Mr. Ridgeway.
Okay, to start with, I want to take just a few minutes and we will talk a little bit later in the agenda about safety, but just to recognize the tragedy at Oxford High School and our heart goes out to that school and the families, the staff and everyone involved. I know school safety is on everybody's minds at this point and we have decided as a board, Mr. Bass and I, in writing the agenda to talk about school safety as an agenda item later on, but I do want you to know we have a safety committee that's been meeting and we were talking today within our committee about seven years. We're coming up on the seven-year mark and so we have actually gone through our crisis plan several different times and I'll talk about some of the things that we've done to help keep our kids, our staff safe in our preschools. Some other better news, so our robotics team is competing at the state meet this weekend, Friday and Saturday, so good luck to the robotics team, this middle school robotics. Both of our teams made the state meet this year, it's at the Keller Arena. I believe the opening ceremonies are around three thirty P M. They are going to livestream it as well as being, they have, they are allowing some audience into the arena to watch. If you've never been to a robotics competition, it is, it is crazy. It is really fun. It's a lot like going to a, I guess, an athletic event, the way they set it up, a lot of music, robots competing, kids dressed up, it's just really fun. Our holiday concerts are happening, so middle school band and choir both performed last week and they did an outstanding job. We have our high school band and choir are both performing Thursday at seven in the auditorium. If you can make it out, that would be great. Our school play occurred last weekend, they did an outstanding job. I thought that the students as well as the director, Sean Harmon, all should be, get accolades for the performance. Our holiday project, which is a tradition here at Upper Creek, continues and the holiday project in general helps families in need during the holiday season and it's a little different this year. Our classrooms in the high schools specifically are doing, they're each collecting a certain item for the families and so one classroom might be collecting, you know, mittens and scarves, another classroom might be collecting, I don't know, food items. And so each classroom in the high school is doing that on top of Waddlesport Elementary, which did a toy drive, a, actually they have a little breakfast that they do for most same families, so I appreciate that. That's out of the direction of Dev Look, who is a retired teacher, continues to do a great job. I want to remind the board, election of officers as well as setting dates and time for meetings is in January at our organizational meeting, so start thinking about officers, start thinking about dates and times of meetings. Right now, we are seven o'clock, the second Tuesday of the month and of course, we have four officers of the board that we elect to elect. And then the last piece that I have on mine is superintendent evaluation. I am recommending that we do that at the end of January, the third or fourth week. There really isn't a, there isn't a timeline except for it has to be done during the school year. Typically, we did it in December, but selfishly, I'd like to push it off to January. It's been a really busy last couple of weeks, so I think we would be better off by pushing out just a, just a touch and then we'll schedule a date for that, you got any issues? And I think that's all I have of communications to start.
Mr. Secretary. We have two communications to the board. First is from Mr. Jared Kavas. Hello, everyone, I apologize for not being able to publicly mention this in person, but it's concert season in the Kavas household and I'm playing dead tonight. I wanted to thank everyone, especially Mr. Ridgeway, for all the conversations and support in regards to the music department and helping recover from the pandemic. I look forward to many more conversations of this nature with you all and I can't wait to see where our program goes. Happy holidays, Jared Kavas, Band and Choir Director, Upper Creek Middle School. This is from Mr. Craig Eden. Starts with, hi, my name is Craig with Battle Creek Masks. I'm ready to ask that you implement universal masking. I have provided this board with information that proves that masks work. It's time for this board to be proactive and not reactive. This board has ignored science for too long on a subject and is putting untold lives in danger. On October eleventh, COVID said that COVID is ninety-nine percent survivable. With about twenty-seven hundred Upper Creek students, he is saying that twenty-seven students is an acceptable loss. The statements like that and these that put health, safety, welfare of the staff and students at risk for getting COVID. A mask is meant to protect others by catching the watercapped blood to experience COVID in the mask before it can become aerosolized. This is not one-hundred percent effective, but it is one of the many tools in our arsenal to help keep the staff and students safe. Just because it's not one-hundred percent does not mean we should go with the zero percent option of no masking. With no mask on individuals, respiratory infection is free to transfer from person to person with no barriers in between to stop the spread. The CDC and the Michigan Department of Health have both recommended universal masking. These are the expert that we rely on upon to keep us safe. Michigan is currently the worst state in the U S for COVID at this time. Our hospitals are overwhelmed with cases and emergency rooms are converting ambulances to other hospitals because they cannot care for any more patients. Vital teams have been deployed to help with the hospital crisis in Michigan. Currently, Calhoun County has a positivity rate of twenty-two point seven percent. That means it's about one in four tests taken that come out positive. To be low on transmission, that would mean that it would be less than five percent. We're almost five times that amount currently. We have all the tools we need to combat this airborne virus and the most simple is face mask. Currently, as it stands, you allow people to come in and spread the virus freely with no mitigations whatsoever. To have a safe school environment, you must implement universal masking. When you allow this to go unchecked in the schools, you send at home where other family members may get sick and hospitalizedize. We need to do everything we can to stop the virus and keep the staff, students and families safe in our community. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Secretary. Ms. Reed, any updates from you?
I do. A lot of students are expressing that, I've been on the video, like all the effects they can achieve.
Can you speak to that?
Oh, into the microphone?
Sure.
Oh, okay. So, a lot of the students are expressing that, oh, that's there, when we are reading, that they're not feeling as safe because they feel like they could be at school. The students are also expressing that they don't feel that as far as actions that could be taken to augment the safety of them aren't great and they don't feel like the students that are making those steps should be able to return. They know that there are some guidelines and different things you guys could do by law, but with some of the students being able to return soon, they don't feel like they're qualified.
Thank you for that. Any suggestions, thoughts that we haven't heard?
Um, no, the latest one is the one that I had the most, the latest student.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, you will move on to district updates and start with curriculum and Mrs. Williams.
Good evening. Are you okay? All right, so just a quick update. We're in the process, our team, for preparing for January seventh. The way our professional development is set up, we have five required days annually for all teachers and then there are several requirements for teachers who were within their first five years. This is one of the rare times, this one at the beginning of the year where we're all together. As you may recall, R E three typically is in the fall, educate and power and quit. We have moved it to the middle of the year for this year and then we, I got input from the teachers at our curriculum council and they would like to see it remain in the middle of the year. So we're excited. We have some well-known speakers that will help us to learn deeper around our professional learning communities. I will be trying to hold the video in if you're interested, the link has a video, we're not going to watch that here today, but it's a way for you to, to gain knowledge around what does that culture look like. Under talent recruitment, as you know, we're working to explore future Michigan educator update. You do have in workbook and in your packet, a course proposal. And that course proposal aligns directly with the initiatives of the state to get the word out there both to our students as well as the people who might look for a different career option, maybe a paraprofessional or a secretary or someone else that would like to become a teacher. We are spending some time having Call, Lunch and Learn and there are four sets and we have had two so far. Where students who are interested in our district, our high school students, they can come and we have different speakers and can answer questions on more of a one-to-one setting. So Mr. Grayman came to our last one and talked about opportunities for our young people that might like to coach and then we had in a previous one, we had Kira Rabbit from the Educational Academy at the Career Center and she went into more detail talking about that program. So currently, our sophomores who may be interested in trades or the programs that the Career Center offers, they learn about that. We feel that that's too late. So this course proposal is in your folder that I'd like you to vote on in January. Allow students, it would be an elective course, to dig deeper into what it might be to be a teacher. So there's course outcomes, it's through, most of it is through Michigan Virtual, so we would have a teacher that facilitated that learning and we would provide opportunities for them to get in the classroom and so there's that for you. One of the exciting things is last week, we had a young lady who came to the Lunch and Learn and she's a senior, so she won't be able to take advantage of this course because it won't be until the fall if it's approved, but she said, Mrs. Williams, what can I do to get into classrooms? And we're going to work with her and others because that can happen. We can make that happen with parent permission and of course, I said you have to have all your assignments turned in, there's some criteria, but she committed to me that she was going to make sure that happens. So I'm excited about the possibilities for that. E three, I talked about that. Multiple tiered support, we're just continuing to enhance our understanding around what does it look like to have high-quality tier one in a classroom and then how do we meet? We know that our assessment scores are not where we want them at all. We, we know that our, um, assessment scores are not where we want them at all, and the only way to respond to that is to pay attention to, A, what is our resources we're using? How are we, one of them being our time in our classrooms? And so we're focusing on understanding what does that look like in a high-quality classroom to be responsive to the orders that are not where they are needed to be benchmark-wise? Um, on this report, you'll see two, well, and one of our previous staff members, they're going through eight days of cognitive coaching, which is a set of tools, and it's really an identity shift from when they're helping. So the two people, Michelle Tuman and Carrie, who are MTSS coaches, they're learning a different way to show up for their colleagues. Um, instead of just telling them what to do, they're, um, learning ways to ask mediative questions. And the philosophy behind that is that we have resources inside of ourselves, and to be able to verbally process that, um, they can feel more empowered. So that's exciting to have more people that are trained in that. Uh, PBIS, as I said, our transportation department is working on getting their signage up. They will be, um, going, continuing to go through some training, and we've had several leaders in that department step up. They are short-staffed right now, but they're still continuing to do the good work and learn around PBIS. Really the only other thing, and the rest of it's the averberity, is the MiFi. So this is really imperative that we work to get as much to 100% of our students. It's only done every other year, and basically it's assessing anonymously risk factors. Um, so a notification did go out to parents both at our middle school and high school. They can opt out. Um, and so then I included a link in there so you can see our data from two years. So we will, um, middle school is working on that this week, and our high school will be doing, um, the assessment, or it's a, a kind of a survey in January. Uh, I think that's all I have. Like I said, um, there are links, so it's a hard copy. Obviously the links don't work. If you want to dig into some details on the future Michigan educator and that proposal, you can collect those links. Do you have any questions from anything that I just shared?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
You're welcome, President Bass.
Uh, facilities and Mr. Robinson.
Good evening. Um, I submitted a report as well. A couple of things that, um, you'll see us, we're bringing back, and hopefully, and I know in January, at least one of them, and maybe at the end of January, and the other, um, are, are two, uh, bids that we'll have out right now. Um, one being the school, or the pool, pardon me, high school data scoring scoreboard and , uh, video system, that's up and out to bid right now, and we're hoping that, well, I should have post bids done, the bids are due the 30th. I should have post bids done that week and be ready to present something to the board in January at our normal board meeting for that, for approvals. Uh, we do have some money, uh, that was, uh, I don't know how to say it, donated, raised, um, from some private folks in the district that are, it's going to help a great deal out with this project as well. Um, right now, the video board does not look at all of the pool. We've done everything I can to make it work, and just been unable to do so. Uh, it is the original board that was in the building, so it's, you know, it's getting up there in age. Uh, the other one, of course, that everybody knows about is the HAC project for the high school. Documents are done, um, and the bid process is in motion right now. I'm thinking they're getting it out this week or early next week. Um, and we'll, we'll know more from that, and hopefully, and we'll have something in January on that, and I will update further as I get firmer dates on that. We're working on that right now. A couple of other things going on, um, we received a bunch of the furniture, um, that's being installed in some of the classrooms. Um, about 160 desks and chairs for all three elementaries and the middle school, so we're working on that. Um, we are, of course, snowm all, which has been really nice this year so far, so we're not complaining about that at all. Um, tomorrow, I think it's supposed to be 60 tomorrow on Thursday, so I don't see any snow in the middle of like a white Christmas either. But, um, the Mansville project, I've been out there on a few occasions now, uh, and most of you have probably seen that building. It's going up. Um, they're doing a good job, and we're trying, we're keeping on top of that as well. Um, all the permitting is up to date, and the proper documentation and everything has been filed, and so we're good to go with that. Um, that's really about it, unless there's any questions to me.
Questions from Sir Robinson. All right, here I see, now we'll move on to finance, and this is Odomeyer.
Good evening. I have attached, um, pretty much the same reports that I've been sending you since starting. And the first one is the cash balance report. I'd just like you to, um, know what we have. Um, I did want to mention the general fund and federal, come on, our combined, the whole general fund cash on hand, but I just do transfers as needed. Um, another thing that I wanted to point out was the debt funds is somewhat high right now, and that's because our, we are summer, we collect summer taxes, and we pay interest on November 1st, and then we pay interest and principal May 1st. So for a few months, we'll be, it'll be high, and then when we make those payments in May, it won't be anymore. Um, the next one is just a list of the check registers, and then the general fund summary, um, is the, the same thing that you've been getting. It's just a list of the original budget that Carol had made, and then where we're at as of the end of November, and then the percentage, everything, if you take a look at it, um, it makes sense. You know, the tax levy being 99%, we, we have kept in most of the taxes. Uh, the state revenue, we just started getting, so that's why it's lower than the federal revenue. Actually, I just made a draw on federal, so the next one will be quite a bit higher if you just, um, it's a grant, so we can access fund it, and then you get paid for it. Down on the expenditures, um, what I like to look at is the percentages, and everything is pretty much in line with where it should be except for the instructional related technology, and that's just because there was nothing in, as in the original budget, but when I update the budget, um, you'll see that, and it'll, it'll be right on track also. Um, I don't know if you have questions about that. The next one is the school lunch fund. I don't, I don't give you that one every time, but I just wanted you to have a snapshot of where we were at in November, um, and show you guys that our revenue is up there with, with, uh, rate program where the students can be free. Um, the federal revenue right there is where that's our reimbursement rate. And so we, that would be, uh, through October is what that is. And then the expenditures are through November. Those are the reports I had. The only other thing when we met with the finance, um, committee, um, on Thursday was, so ESRS three is due. I know we've been talking a lot about ESRS, we've talked a lot about ESRS one, ESRS two. ESRS three report is due, um, in two days, actually. Um, and so we have had several meetings on, on it, and I finally was able to put it, put the numbers on the page. So I just did a quick summary, um, of support services. So 1.6 million is what's been released to us, um, which is two-thirds of the total. And there's really five groupings that we use. Support services, which is mental health, um, partnering with Star Commonwealth, health program technicians, additional support specialists, EA, EAD Global, which is, uh, what is it? Research-based information and extra help, contract, um, tracing and phone calls. Another, um, big one is the addressing of learning loss, including summer school, after school programs, and transportation for those programs. Uh, technology, laptops for subs, laptops for text, um, some software, microphones for the middle school, uh, paraprofessional Chromebooks and, um, possible bus cameras. Operation and maintenance, uh, the PPE, the mask for the bus, uh, extra cost to sanitize, additional custodians at H Elementary, and, uh, some of the HVAC system. And the other thing was some shortage. I know, um, Jim had just talked about getting new furniture, and that came out of ESRS two money, and then there's even more that was built into, made for ESRS three.
Yeah, the biggest thing I want to say about the ESRS money is this, this really is for '22, '23, and so this is very preliminary. We have to start somewhere, and we will continue to get stakeholder input because, you know, this is partial of the money. There'll be more money coming to see how the money can be spent, so we'll continue to get, um, input from our stakeholders groups throughout. So we, we just think as a finance committee, not a part of that committee, that reporting out what we're thinking out loud in public, I think is important so people know what we are potentially going to spend the money on it. But ESRS three is not this year's money. It would be for the next week.
Just want to audience to show if ESRS one, ESRS two, and ESRS three.
Well, ESRS one, uh, occurred really on the very first part of COVID when we were in virtual, that March of 2020 range, um, and we were able mostly to spend money, it was getting things ready for cleaning PPE supplies. Um, we bought those 360 machines, but there, there was mostly that, that type. There wasn't a ton of money in, in that first round, about 250,000, which is significant, but it wasn't as much as 2.5 million. And then the next round, ESRS two, was about a million dollars, and that's where we did, um, our summer school, we're planning for summer school again this year. Um, we had lowered our classroom sizes. Uh, we added quite a few teachers specifically in elementary school. I know that some staff at the middle school and high school are saying, you know, we could lower our classes also with some of that money and some of the stakeholder input that would definitely be heard. Um, but we, we did do that, which I thought was a significant thing last year, and we continue to get into this year. So ESRS two really is kind of this year's money. Um, I haven't got anything else on the top of my head, that's, I mean, there's lots more that we already presented.
Summer program.
Yeah, summer program was a, was a big amount for learning loss. We're looking at potentially doing an after-school program in addition to our summer school program, and we think that that would be successful as well.
Something I wanted to say is 20% of ESRS funds is required to be spent on, um, addressing learning loss, so summer schools, after schools.
Any questions from this Odomeyer?
When do, when should we expect to have a budget update approximately?
So my goal was January, and it could still be January, but we had, um, a huge part of our budget is grants and consolidated apps, and they just released those numbers, and we, we, I don't have numbers yet to do that in order to carry over what's the main part. So at worst, it would be in February, but I'm trying for January, but I just haven't, I don't have the information to be able to.
We do have our student count from the fall count, and it was slightly above what we budgeted, so we did have a loss of students from the previous year, but, um, it was slightly, I think it was five students above what our budget was. So, um, that was good that we were conservative, um, and then obviously with the revenue, we pretty much know all of our sources, um, of revenue coming in. Um, we, the only one we really don't know is what the casino money or the pill money is going to be, and we'll find that out hopefully in February. I think we'll find that out.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rayner to hand technology.
All right, um, we've talked a little bit about our device deployment for this year, last couple of meetings, and now it's time to start thinking about next year already. Um, in order to avoid a situation again where we're waiting six months to get our devices, if not longer, um, it was recommended that we order early again, um, but we don't need to order right now. Um, much like everything else in the world, since they've gotten more expensive, Chromebooks that two summers ago would pay $160 for are now 240. Um, and the Google licenses, we have to buy one of those for every Chromebook, like 2432. And, uh, the computers for the high school haven't changed a whole lot. But the good news is the state contract pricing is due to come out late winter, March, April ish, and they're expecting the prices to be a little bit lower, because that's when they say does their bid to get the, the low prices. So right now, you know, we'd need almost $200,000 for about these three grades of computers, and I'm expecting that to be a bit less when it comes down to it, but just to get that on the radar. Um, like the high school devices, if we bought them today, we would actually get them because they're in stock, but they tell us if we wait till, you know, July, if we're in a purchase order, we're going to be in that order situation. So, so we're just going to keep an eye on that and kind of, you know, see when the best time to jump is, but.
So the general plan every year is to buy computers or what grades?
First grade, fifth grade, and ninth grade. That's the, when they get to each building, they're going to use a computer, and then they keep it for four years, and then our plan is to sell off the old ones because they're about past the useful life at that point, and then replace them each year. Um, and kindergarten uses touchscreen Chromebooks that, um, we're kind of replacing on a more as-needed rolling basis, um, just to keep things clean. So it's two grade levels every year to be precise. Um, some of the network issues we've had lately, so we've had a few outages off and on, largely attributable to our firewall, which is up there in age, it's no longer supported. Uh, the good news is we have anyone. Um, bad news is in order to install it, we have to get another piece of hardware installed, which we also have bought, but is delayed until February at this point. So we are working with the vendor to see if there's any mitigations we can give in the meantime to, to clean down some of the stuff that's happening. Basically, the firewall can't handle that much, um, processing power, and so when it gets too much traffic, it starts to get off the ghost. So we are working on that. Um, that's part of our E-rate project, is the new other hardware we have to replace, and that was hopefully coming in by now, but has not. So we're hopeful that that will come in on schedule at least in February, and the vendor is waiting to install it. Other upcoming items, the high school cafeteria, uh, AV system has been ordered. We're waiting for parts ETA on that. We're expecting delays again, but it is one of those things. Uh, we're hoping to get that going. It will have a similar system to this room as far as the touchscreens to control it, turn everything on, and we can make it real simple. This is a button to push, make the projector go, make the screen come down, make it easy for everyone to use. Um, this room as well, we have, I quote, we're working on getting a permanently installed camera for streaming these meetings, so make that better. And one of the big ones waiting for is a massive battery backup appliance that resides in the dishwasher that is going to keep all of our servers running in event for power failure, which we're told might be coming by spring or Christmas break. So if that happens, we're hoping it lines up with the time when people are here to get it installed, because that's a great time to do it. Uh, but if not, we will find the time, uh, that is a vital piece. And we also got, uh, boxes and boxes and boxes of batteries for all the battery backup units that are spread around the district, which are also desperately needed replacements. So we're actually looking pretty good. Uh, the next big thing I need to mention in the previous meeting is we're going to want to replace our server infrastructure at some point. I don't have pricing yet, I'm still waiting for the vendors to give back to us on some ideas, and that doesn't have to happen this year. So that's just one of those things that you do every so often, is getting time, so.
Questions from Mr. Rayner. All right, here I see, then we'll move on to the student presentation, the school dress code.
Thank you for, thank you. Thank you for, thank you.
This to have more comfort at the high school. This can allow them to feel more comfortable if they have a hood or something to possibly hide behind. And this can help their learning to go further in the classroom. So when we started this, we actually created a presentation, as you can see on the screen, to address the policy. And on our first slide, you can see that we have the current, we have the current policy language. And this shows. This shows what our policy looks like as of, looks of as of now. And so right now, we can see that there are no hats and hoods allowed, except for religious reasons. And we're looking to change that. So in our presentation, we looked at different dress code policies from other schools. And in these dress code policies, we look at the hat policy. Many schools don't actually have a hat policy that are around us. So for example, at this school, the dress code policy just says that it should not obscure the face. So if you look at it, they do allow hats and hoods as long as they're still able to see your identity or discover who you are in case they need to. We showed this for a few other schools, such as Quordage, who also do not mention hats and hoods in their dress code policy at all. And they also don't really have any restrictions on hats or hoods. This is also seen in Kalamazoo. And then this is also seen in a few other schools like Lakeview. For schools who do have the hat and hood policy, then there is a lot of rules with that. And we have seen there has been some pushback at those schools against that, or it is not enforced. So some students may receive discipline for it while others are not. So this is an example of Marshall. They do have a dress code for hats and hoods. They say that it's not allowed to be in the building unless it's approved by their admin. So for this policy, we just have a little bit more information on the slides about how much it can cost to do different hair types and the reason why the student may not have had their hair ready for school. And for this, in order to try to gain support for this policy, we actually completed a few different petitions. So we have an online student petition for community members and students, which has over seven hundred signatures at this point. And we have also asked teachers at the high school, and over ninety percent of teachers are okay if we do get rid of the hat and hood policy. And other than that, I think that's everything that I have.
Board member, do you have any questions?
I just want to applaud you with taking the step to take action and, and move outside probably your comfort zone. And in doing this research, I think that this is an excellent presentation. I'm very proud of you and your, your group.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that everybody, audience and board knows, I had told the board that we were not going to take action tonight. We typically, and you'll see in our, our policies coming up, we typically take action three times, reading something to look at a policy. But we do, and we think, we appreciate the information so that we can start the discussion process of if a policy change is going to happen. But I don't want anybody to think that we're going to make a decision tonight, and we don't, it's, it's a done deal. It's more of a thoughtful process.
Yeah, I just want to echo the statement about the work that Carla and the members of the race committee did. They began by gathering some information for themselves, presenting it to myself and the high school administration. And then from there, we, we met again, and we followed, followed up with what other information is out there that can help us. And that's where the student petition came in, the staff petition came in, which I believe, you know, you've been included with that information there. And then Carla and I sat down and decided like, okay, what is the language, looking at all of this? What fits us, you know, based on this information? And so we included a proposal to omit the section of our handbook, which refers specifically to the hat and headwear policy, to replace it with a much more simpler statement, which we feel is more inclusive for all students, that would be our needs. So if you have any questions for me, I can answer those as well.
So administration is supportive of this change?
Yeah, that's correct.
So the only question I can think of is, you know, after you leave high school, you go to, let's say the real world, but the work world. And there are obviously most jobs out there are going to have some type of limitations on what a dress code looks like. How does this necessarily prepare our students for what lies next?
It's a good question, which is why when we, Carla and I and members of the race club were discussing this, we, we brought that, that point up exactly, you know. Part of the reason we have dress codes, like in the organization, you have some guidelines for how you dress and how you show up. And we all recognize that that's there. But if you'll notice, what we didn't omit is the discretion of the building and certain classes to have restrictions on headwear. Classes like physical education, lab-based classes, where hats or hoods might be obstruction to safety specifically. That is, you know, an area where it could still be restricted. But we also recognize, you know, things have changed, you know, our society has changed. And I do believe there's a lot more acceptance in the real world for headwear to be worn. And we feel like if students can be more comfortable in our building for learning, which is our purpose, then why not, you know, follow the model of some of the schools in our area nationally and view headwear differently? I think the biggest challenge is going to be the shifting of our adult learners to how we can, you know, still meet the needs of our students while they're wearing hats.
Implementation, what would be the ideal time for you to implement a change?
Great question. I'm glad you asked. I know we have another board meeting early in January. It's still early in the winter season, and so I would advocate that we make policy change for the second semester of the school year, so that we could implement the process, the, the new policy for the second semester. Each year, we come to the board in the summer with a revision over our whole handbook that would include the dress code. So we would have information from the second semester of this school year to look at what impact hats and hoods and headwear have had on learning. So I would have information. And if any of that information influenced the dress code for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, then I can bring that to you at that time.
Mr. Anthony, I, you've probably taken in consideration, but I just want to say aloud, students that may have had it down during classes, could be trying to sleep, not be able to identify kids accurately in a, you know, a bad situation or scenario with hoodies. I'm sure all that's been considered, but where do we land on that at?
It's a good question. Yes, all those have been considered. And that's been one of the challenges that, that I push back against students who have asked of. I think anybody who works with surveillance and/or, you know, building safety and security would recognize it is more difficult to recognize students with hats and hoods on. Although usually there's enough identifying marks, to be honest with you, when our students are in the building, that we can identify our students regardless. It does take some more work. I, I talked to Officer Mackey to get his input on that. And to be honest with you, the masks have actually been a greater hindrance to identifying students that probably had some of those at this point. So if I'm being honest, that's what most of the schools, and Officer Mackey has asked and spoken to some others, and that was their responsibility.
My only comment is not about this particular issue, but just policy change in general. And I assume the policy committee will take this up. But any policy we have was created for a reason. So subsequently, any change in policy has to be justified. I mean, so there were some, there were some causal factors out there when we created this policy. So as someone who's going to eventually vote on this, I'd like to know what, what was the rationale for the policy to begin with? And what's changed in our environment that would cause us to want to change that? I think that's just a normal part of any policy change, so that's kind of how I view these things in general.
And we, and we have looked at the policy committee. That's a, that's a broad question to answer. I would just say typically the headwear policy was a reflection of what was traditional societal norms at that time, in an educational setting certainly. And I think Carla's presentation addressed very well, if you read it and look through it, some of the rationale for some of the changes. To be more inclusive, more equitable of an environment, I do think we need to consider alternative headwears and, and allow our students to feel comfortable wearing headwear. Especially if you look at how important image is to a high school student, to really a student of any age. And the, the impact that hair has on an image and the security that a hood or a hat could provide a student could certainly help them feel more comfortable in the learning environment.
It does, it does seem that quite a few of the teachers and staff members have signed petition, which I tell was impressive. So well done. And that's, I think, excellent presentation and pretty well-rounded. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to comments related to agenda items. Remember, please stationing address, three minutes maximum. And would you have another comment session before action items? Ms. Forman.
Good evening. I had it for the agenda, because I believe that there were some letters sent to the board's secretary for everyone today about staff wanting COVID days. Those weren't read. Is it okay if I still speak on that issue?
Sure.
Okay. So good evening, and thank you for listening. I'm here tonight to ask the board to consider giving teachers ten COVID days. Now, I know that the district doesn't have to even offer this. I get it. I can only hope that the district can consider this request. Because we are told that we are better than average. We're told that we have a bad staff. So I'm hoping that for the staff who gives their all, the district could consider those ten days. And I told our members, and overwhelmingly they want the ten COVID days. Don't get me wrong. We do appreciate the district's proposals. But there are some issues that it doesn't address. Five days doesn't cover a quarantine. Quarantine lasts ten. Five days ignores the issues of childcare. And unfortunately, you can't take your kid to daycare because if they have a cough or COVID, they're not allowed. A handful of staff already have sick days taken from them. So even with the five days, there's no rollover incentive. But really, this is for our new teachers. Five days does not provide an incentive for new teachers to stay. If they're going to be docked pay because they are quarantined or isolated, what stops them from going to a different district? With the COVID days, they won't roll over, and HDA is willing to give up the attendance bonus, saving the district money. Do you have to do this? Of course, not at all. Yet think of this, schools across the county, the country are having staffing issues. So my question is this, why not do something different to stand out and show that you care about your staff? If no other district is doing COVID days, that is an incentive to bring more staff to Harper Creek. So let Harper Creek break the mold. That's all for my comments. I don't know if you wanted to re-vote ones that were sent.
Anything that was sent, that was sent to the entire board?
Okay.
Has been read, so they don't need to be read during the meeting?
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fulbright.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Fulbright, and I am a current board member and former president of Battle Creek Pride. I am here today on behalf of Battle Creek Pride. For those of you who don't know, Battle Creek Pride is the local LGBTQ plus organization here in Battle Creek. We service the entire city to include all four districts. When I went looking at your website, for some reason it slipped past me. But currently, your policy under section bylaws zero one four five, titled discriminatory harassment, it says other prohibited conduct includes that which has the purpose or effect of creating an intimidating, hostile, discriminatory, or offensive environment on the basis of gender, religion, race, color, national origin, or ancestry, age, disability, height, weight, marital status, and/or any other legally protected characteristic. Battle Creek Pride is asking the Harper Creek School Board to revise their policy for the district to add sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression to your discriminatory policy. I'm sure we all could say that we would not tolerate discrimination of any kind. So now, Battle Creek Pride is asking you to not just say it, but to put an writing in your district's policy. In two thousand nineteen, the Michigan Association of School Boards made a resolution to their own policy adding sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. It says, and I quote, "The Michigan Association of School Boards supports equal rights for all, and the M A S B urges immediate action by all district boards to adopt, implement, and enforce policies protecting students from violence, discrimination, harassment, and bullying for any reason, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, religion, disability, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression." Battle Creek Pride wants to follow up with not only you, but the other district in Battle Creek that hasn't updated their policy yet. So far, two have out of the four. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Helfer.
Ambassador, thank you very much for your time. I did want to talk a little bit about the mask discussion. A few months ago, we had a very similar discussion. I'm very interested to understand. At that time, we talked about new information that we would, would be the basis for bringing up the conversation. One of the things that concerns me greatly is it's starting to trend into the territory of oppression. And oppression by its very definition is unjust or cruel exercise of authority or power. Today, we're in an environment where we have a choice. I personally believe not to have my children live in fear. They have a much, much higher incident of perishing in a car accident or even perishing from sunstroke. However, I exercise the ability to take them to school in my car, take them to activities in my car throughout the country, as a matter of fact. I also take caution allowing them to play when it is very hot outside. I just want to make sure that they're able to experience things and live in this world without fear. I believe that the current policy enables parents to make that choice. And I would commend you to continue that policy unless there is significant information that changes the course of the discussion. Thanks.
Ms. Carolina, I'm not going to mispronounce this, I apologize. How do I say it?
Poppy S.
Poppy S. What was I going to say?
I've been coming here since the school started talking about the same thing. I'm hoping to eliminate talking about COVID. But I want to ask you all, do you all know that our state is beyond capacity for mental health updates? And they have to use the ER and the ER hallways to hold patients before anything opens up for them. I have a friend who, her twenty-one-year-old son tried to commit suicide over the weekend. He is currently in our ER awaiting, in whom, in a hospital. And this is all because of this pandemic, because of us, all of us, following and mandating all of this, the quarantines, the isolations. Sorry. COVID is no longer a pandemic. Mental health is. In the U.S., the ER visits for attempted suicides in minors have increased. In the US, the ER visits for attempted suicides in minors have increased by 50% compared to prior to the pandemic. It has not been discussed enough the effect of this pandemic, the lockdowns, the isolation, and the quarantines have on our kids. Kids do not receive adequate coping techniques, their mental health is still developing, and isolating them is not good for it. I am in contact with many parents across the state in different school districts, and the one similar issue they face is the increase in behavioral issues the school faces. We need to do better for our youth. They are the ones that hopefully will take over our position, your positions. Can you imagine the state of this country if we do not take actions and do better by them? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eli Kent?
Eli Kent, and the 191th only drug. I didn't come up here today with any statistics or anything like that, just the voice, voice of a parent. We're against mandates. We discussed this before, the parents stood up here before and told you guys, no mandates for masks. We mean it now, we meant it then, we're going to mean it tomorrow. We do not want mask mandates. Allow the parents to parent their children and decide what they want. You want to wear a mask, wear a mask. Do you want your kids to wear one, let them wear one. Do not force us to make our decisions. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Randy Miller?
So, a couple things. First, this is the hat policy. So I work in a room and we're allowed to wear hats every day at work, as long as they're appropriate, and we have a guideline for that. So our dress code is we can wear hats, I wear a hat every day, and it's just got to be appropriate for our company. So it's got to be a vendor, it's got to be one of our customers, it can be that, we can't be any, you're agitatory or defensive. Second thing is the mask mandate, I'm with everybody else, I think my right as a parent is like what my child needs to wear or doesn't need to wear, I don't need somebody telling me what's right for my child. It's my decision, it's my choice of what I do and how I teach my children that, and what else is. And you're a big masker, we've watched you touch your mask 20, 25 times since this meeting started. If you're touching it or touching anything else, that's processed.
Sir, you don't need to dress the board.
That's fine. So anyway, so people up here, I said my views, so that's about half, so I'm against the masks and it's my choice.
Thank you. Last one. Jessica Hamon. It's the last one on the list.
Yeah. You want to come with me?
No. I don't want to hear what I'd like to say. No, you're fine.
Okay, so I just try to come once a year for the Clayhawke team, so thank you very much, we had another successful season. Second team, high school team in the trap championship again for the year in the state of Michigan, we took 15 kids down to Ohio. For this year, we had six of them, maybe nine of them, that decided they wanted to do the whole shebang because they lost last season, so we were there for a solid week in July in Ohio. They did well, they had them all, so thank you for that. There's a couple of you in this room that have been here since this started. This is pretty cool. I told you back in 2011, 2012, that if you gave these kids a chance, you could have a kid that went on to college and shot their way through school. We finally did it. So, lo and behold, it was our youngest that was never going to college, stopped putting money into my IRA, it's, I'm not going. We had his open house, thank God we got him through high school, Mr. Anthony will contest to that. We got his open house, we're at State's Gate, and he said, "I'm not done shooting, I want to go to Alabama." So you went from a kid that, you gave a kid a chance, that's awesome. We have more kids now going, "I can do that." It's keeping them in school, it's making them finish, it's keeping them eligible. This kid now, that was never going anyplace, I mean, I love him, but he hated school. He's enrolled in insurance. He's going to be an insurance adjuster in the agricultural field, so for that, thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, the act concludes. I check the item to public comment. All right, I'll move on to consent agenda, Mr. Secretary.
Chair calls for most of the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund checks, tool services fund checks, and the student school activities fund checks, according to the list discussed. Approve the November 8, 2021 meetings as reviewed, meeting minutes as reviewed.
Move on.
Support?
It's been moved by Mr. Barry Smith, supported by Mrs. Alward. We have discussion.
I did see one spot, Higgins, in the budget committee, I think just the word policy. And he said he had one.
So, any other mandate then? We have any further discussion? All right, please call the roll as a mandate. Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Back to orders?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Myers, absent, Mr. Martin, I vote yes, and Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
All right, move on to information discussion, start with school safety.
Okay, as I said, I was going to talk a little bit, I don't want to get long into it, but I do think this is important, I think it's important to folks that are listening at home as well as our board members. Because we have had a safety committee for a time, but we have new board members who weren't as familiar with what the safety committee did or does. The committee is not the only thing we do for safety, but it is a group that meets that is focused on safety. We started off, originally, we had an event at the school, I'm not sure if you remember, if you've been around a while, you might have, we had a bomb threat, an evacuation, and then we sent all the kids home on a school bus. And after that event, we said, okay, we've got a lot of work to do because we need to be more organized, we need to make sure we know exactly what's going on. So our school is required to have a district response plan or crisis response plan, which is this red book that we have, and we have rewritten that three times in the last six years. Unfortunately, as tragedies happen, we learn more. And so we learn how we should address, how we should prepare for, and then how we should react to emergencies. Now, this book isn't all about active shooting, that's one piece. There are many other things that could happen within a school that that policy book does address. I want to talk today specifically about active shooters because of the tragedy in Oxford, and to make sure people feel like, you know, there are things that have happened for us to be as prepared as we possibly can. Now, the committee has been made up of several groups of people, law enforcement, first responders, we even had, or we had state police, we also had a person who was with Homeland Security for a time, and then of course, our school administrative staff. Our police layers and officers are the leaders of that group, and they continue to push the envelope and ensure that we have the most up-to-date plan that we can in place. Mr. Bo Bass has been the board member since he has been a school board member, the safety is his passion, he's been a driver to ensure that that group continues to be. There are times when we feel pretty safe, when we have lulls between tragedies where, you know, we maybe get lax a little bit, and I think that Bo, President Bass, has throughout the entire time been the one that said, no, we have to continue to push. And things that have happened, at first, you know, we had lots of ideas, and they cost lots of money, we were unsure of how we were going to do some of those things. One of the very first things we did is we added a second police liaison officer, we have one at the house at the high school, one house at the middle school, but they also serve our elementary buildings, but they're housed at those two buildings. Other things is we wrote grants, and specifically Officer Rich Mackey wrote a federal grant for about $225,000, and then a state grant for about $200,000. The federal grant was specifically for communications. We felt communications was an area that we needed to improve because we had a lunch room, or I'm sorry, we had recess monitors that were outside that didn't have access or communication with the inside. We have PE teachers going outside, we have buildings in different locations, so we want to all communicate together. And so getting radios, and with the federal grant, we purchased approximately 100 radios. They use a sequence or a frequency that the police use in Michigan, so we don't need the towers that you might see at some schools, you might see our towers still sitting at the bus garage, we haven't taken it down. But we don't use the towers anymore because these are much more reliable. Theoretically, if we tell, if we tell the right people, I think the state police, we could have our buses have those radios work all the way to the upper peninsula of Michigan, so they're really effective, and then obviously they work within our area. Each building has their own, their own program, their own.
Channel.
There you go, better, channel. But we have a district channel as well that we use when an emergency happens. So if we have an emergency, everybody charges the emergency channel so we can all communicate together. So that was a big piece. Training for our police layers and officers was also a piece of the federal grant. Then the state grant, we thought was really important because we did not have secured vestibules at the high school and middle school, and so those were installed, they actually were completed during the 2020 COVID year, and so now they're in place. All of you know that we have buzzer systems that are all over our buildings, those have been in place since 2009, but if you went to the high school before, or the middle school, you were buzzed into the school. So theoretically, someone would have access, now you have to turn and go into the office before you have access, which makes it much safer. We also purchased a device called our Raptor system where we can check driver's license. Now, you'll notice we don't have as many visitors with the COVID years, but when we first got the Raptor system, if you wanted to come and go eat lunch with your child, we would run your license, it would check some of the registries in Michigan to make sure you're not a sex offender, to make sure you don't have any outstanding warrants, things like that, and then you would get a name badge that you would show that you are properly able to come into the school district. Now, like I said, we don't have as many volunteers, so we haven't used the Raptor system as much, but it is ready and willing and in place to use. Just looking at my notes, I don't want to miss any of the other pieces. So a big part of the safety committee and getting ready for safety is to have a plan. And so the plan has changed over the years, and I don't want to go into too much detail of what our plans are because we don't want the perpetrators to know what to do or what to be prepared for. So I don't want to go into huge detail, but enough detail for you to understand. We think as a school district, and then when I say we have a safety committee led by our police layers and officers, that the first thing that we need to do is to secure in place. And so in cooperation with the Emmett Township Police Department, we did a fundraiser, I think it was four years ago, 95 now, where we bought something called Night Lock Devices, and you may have heard that at the Oxford High School, they also had these devices. And what the device does is that you can put it within the door, it's in every single classroom, it's actually in almost every room in the entire school district. But you put these into the door, into either the floor or into the location that it goes, and you cannot open that door. You cannot physically as a single person open that door. And so it secures the people inside that room, then we have to just simply make sure that we don't have, you know, people in a line of sight. So we go through processes with training with our teachers, and they're the coaches in the room, they're coaching the kids about what to do. I don't think I'll go into too much more detail as to what the coaching is, but that's the first thing. But we don't want to just sit and hide, that's not, that's not the whole thing. We have hide, the next step would be to fight if we have to, and the last piece is to flee if necessary. Now, if you listen to, if you've watched anything about public spaces, they say to flee first. The reason that we don't say to flee first is it takes two to three minutes for the police or the first responders to show up at a school shooting, and that's based on all the tragedies that have happened over the last 20 years. And so it is upon us as school officials, as teachers, as staff in these classrooms in school, secure those kids in place for that two to three minutes and make them as safe as possible, so that we feel that that is critically, critically important. We do safety drills, of course, every school in Michigan does. We had a safety committee meeting today, and we talked about making sure those drills are more realistic, because we want to make sure under pressure situations, that all of us, our staff, our kids, everybody involved can react in a pressure situation. It's easy to do a drill, when everybody knows it's coming, and just kind of walk through it. We want to make sure that the drills that we do are meaningful and getting, of course, we do fire, tornado, along with lockdown, lockdown type drills. We have talked about a refresher of our training now. Officer Mackey did send out an email to the entire staff with an update as to, you know, reminder of this is what you do in those situations, because it's been a bit since we've had our last training. We try to train every other year, and so some of our teachers said, well, it's been a year and a half, let's do a refresher now. So they're going to every staff, one at a time, to make sure that they have a face-to-face refresher, so that staff can ask questions if they have them, and exactly what they should do during the event of the worst-case scenario. And when you, when we hear the word lockdown, that is our worst-case scenario. We have other types of drills that we do besides lockdown, but lockdown is the worst scenario that we really want to prepare for. Anything else that I would like to mention? Oh, I'm missing anything from my meeting today? About the school safety part, we'll talk about Crosswalk in a second.
I would add that the Night Lock device was used in Oxford, so something that we have here, issues to potentially save lives in Oxford, so those types of things, you know, can be great effective.
We have actually looked at a lot of other things. One thing that we're looking at, we have a couple hundred cameras in the school, which is helpful. If we could upgrade our camera systems to be face recognition and things like that, that may be helpful. But I want to talk about threat assessments for a second, because, you know, I had seven call out physically to middle school, parents that, you know, there was a threat that we were investigating. When we have a threat, and sometimes the threats are fairly small, other times they are fairly scary, and no matter what kind of threat comes forward, we do the same threat assessment every time. The police, our police layers and officers are made aware, and they immediately start the threat assessment process. They ensure that the person, you know, first of all, they check to see if it's a credible or not credible threat, and I don't want us to be confused, when we say it's not a credible threat, it doesn't mean the student is not getting disciplined. I think, I would like to have a discussion as a board, but we want to have zero tolerance on threats to our kids' safety, our school's safety, and we want to make sure that we have discipline for kids that decide that they're going to do a threat. Many times, they're joking, they might say, or they say that I didn't really mean it, but unfortunately, in these times, we just can't stand for it, and we have to move forward with the rest of the people coming with us. I did want to mention that before we begin.
Mr. Exentia?
Just, I guess, a comment and a question, or a recommendation, I shared with you both. I just think this is such a critical issue. I'd like to see a safety update as a standing agenda item on our board meetings. I mean, if there's not a lot to do to discuss, fine, but I think, I think we ought to keep it out in front of the board in every meeting. And then just a question, relative to the threat assessments, I think everyone's read about what happened in Oxford, and if you can share, I mean, I think most people are aware of the rather troubling pictures that the student was drawing. Just that, how would something like that have been handled in Harper Creek with our current threat assessment?
Right, I don't want this to mean that I'm critical of what happened in Oxford, but the way that I would see it in the same exact situation, I believe that this was sawed by a teacher, went to a counseling office. We want to make sure, and we've talked about this in the last week with our staff, to say, you know, if you see something, say something, just like we say to the parents, we want to get it up the chain so that it gets to a point where it gets addressed. So the counselor would then tell probably their building leader, if it's the principal or assistant principal, and that. and that I would, I would say would kick us automatically to a threat assessment. Is this person a threat? You know, we would go through processes by which we search backpacks, lockers, you know, all, all kinds of different things that, that we go through, a very thorough situation. I don't want much detail on go because I don't want, if somebody's a perpetrator to, oh, okay, I'll hide those things. But we want to make sure that that, that threat is not in the building right now. And that's the first step that happened. The second steps are, you know, things outside, what's the, what has happened over the last period of time? Is it credible that the person have the means to carry this out in, at this moment? Those are the types of things that we are deciding really quickly. And when I say we, it's our, our police officers are doing that and they get whatever help they need. You know, we have our police liaison officers, but there's also detectives. There's other police departments in the area that, that, that will come and help. I would tell you, if we have an event and we had that one bomb threat six years ago, and there was probably, I don't know, 30 different police cars from at least four jurisdictions that came in immediately as soon as they could to help in any possible way. And I know that they, they will do that, but as I said, that two to three minutes before they get there is the critical piece of time. A, a mental health is another piece and it's a piece that, it's hard. I know, I, I just heard a public comment about how it's hard to get mental health services right now. And so we, you know, myself and especially Mrs. Williams, but other folks in the school as well, we re-engaged and before this happened, we re-engaged at the beginning of the school year with some of our healthcare providers in the area to try to ensure that our kids have the help, help that they need. Give to parents, especially when we see there may be any places where they can call. But we would really love to have healthcare providers, our mental healthcare providers within our school district that are from these agencies. Now, we wouldn't do it without parent permission, but we like to have that access so that we can get the kids help that they need. And so we've, we have engaged with some groups. I think you heard during the, the ESRS that I have, we have engaged with Star Commonwealth. And they, they actually work with our youngest learners, our elementary kids. I, I think it's, it's probably best practice that we help kids at the youngest ages because mental health issues just typically, you know, over time, you know, the severity worsens as well as, you know, what happens worsens. And I know people are worried and scared. You know, I, I listen to kids. The last couple of days I've had the good fortune of being in the middle school most day, most of the day, most days. And, you know, there's, there's, there's kids that are worried and scared. And we want to do everything we can to make them feel, feel better and comfortable. At the middle school specifically, we brought in, I don't know, I think there was four or five Emmett Township Police Officers all last week that came in to support to help people feel and, and hopefully lessen some of that anxiety as we move forward. Now, the safety committee isn't just all about active shooter training. We also talk about other things. And one of the big projects that we have, a safety concern that we saw is kids going across Beetle Lake Road after school to go to, you know, the place across the street to get, you know, food after school. And so we are in process and we have already authorized the money to put a crosswalk in. We're working with the county and we talked to the county today where exactly to put it and talking about widening our entrance up a little bit as well. And then a pie in the sky dream that we have and, you know, and we've had a lot of these that have painted fruition is to do a walking path around the entire property here. That would be for community use. You see that in different places in Battle Creek or even in the area. And that would be connected to our crosswalk so that kids, our, especially middle school, that's what our biggest worry is, our middle school kids would have a, you know, a, a sidewalk for lack of a better term, but a walk to walk on that safe and cross safely so that we don't have to worry about them being hit by a vehicle. You know, that's another piece of the work that's done by the safety committee. We, we talk about a lot of things. It's, it's not just simply the active shooter training, although right now that's on, on the top of our minds. We try to really think about how else could we make our, our kids, our staff and everyone safe in the school. Open up for any questions that you may cover.
We will move on to the school year update and the OSHA emergency temporary standard.
Okay. I feel like a broken record. They've been talking about this for two board meetings and we had scheduled several board meetings. Right now, there is a stay in the federal courts on the mask mandate and this is for employees. And so what it would mean if someone wasn't vaccinated, they would have to test once a week and, and, and or wear masks. It's being challenged in courts. It has been suggested by our attorneys, our school district attorneys, that we do not move forward until it gets through the court system. And so we are in, in a pause. There was a period of time, two weeks ago, where I sent, sent out a communication to the board that said, they're telling us we got to act now, we had, got it, we have to have this in place by a certain date. And then they changed their mind because I think the court case will take a little longer than they anticipated. Now, we need to be prepared. We have communicated with our staff of the possibilities, but we are waiting on the policy. I, I think everybody's taken a look at it. We would choose option two if we, if we ever were to put the policy in place. Option two is the option in which people have the test, weekly test option as unvaccinated employees. So the other option is that you either have to be vaccinated or not. Or not work here. We don't think that that's in, in a good spirit of, of what we feel about choice as a district. Is there any questions about that? This is the first time we've talked about it within front of us. Everybody's really up to speed on that.
Okay, we'll move on to the COVID-19 data.
Okay, and I apologize to Mr. Smith, he's probably not going to be able to see this. So I'm going to try to get the data on the screen in. I was doing pretty good up until I got to this point. Now pull it over. As I said, I apologize, Jason, I don't think you're going to be able to see this.
No worries.
And I'll make this a little bigger. And it's the same, it's the same chart. I know I'm probably a broken record looking at the same kind of charts for, for what our local COVID data is. I'll make it a little bit smaller so we can see it, see the whole thing. And so the, the chart basically goes through positive cases total. And then the total number of quarantined individuals since we started school is by school building. And so for example, I don't want you to read all these, but Beetle Lake Elementary, there was, there has been 33 students, seven of the staff members who have tested positive for COVID and 263 students who have been quarantined at some point throughout the school year. And each building, Wilds Park Elementary, Sonoma, the middle school and high school are represented. Our total number of COVID cases for students is 298 positive cases and staff is 42. And the total number of quarantines at this point is 1,968 students and 15 staff. One thing that I know that some staff members had, had wanted me to make sure that I had talked a lot about to the board is, remember a quarantine isn't a one-day event. Typically, if a student is quarantined, they're quarantined for somewhere between, now with testing specifically, two to five days. You know, it's a seven-day test out option. There's also, if you don't test out, you have a 10-day so that you could be in quarantine longer. But each quarantine does represent several days in time. And many staff are concerned about the learning loss, the time that they don't have a certain amount of kids in class. So maybe in my class of high school students, I have 30 students in my class. Five are gone for quarantine, the next week another, another different three are gone. The next week another different three or four are gone. And so they, they just say it's interrupting the, the learning quite a bit. And we, I think we know that, that quarantines are, are probably the most effective, the most effective on our students. The next column is the number of quarantined students or staff that became positive. And so that number continues to increase over, over time. We're at 87 as a district. And that represents 29% of the total positive cases or 4% of the total number of students who have been in quarantine. Does that make sense? Make sure you say that right for everyone. The 4% is 4% of people, I guess in this case, kids in quarantine became positive. The other side of the coin is 29% of, of kids that are positive were in quarantine. Does that make sense now? It's kind of talking both sides of the coin. But I want to, I want to present the information fairly and everybody's perspective.
Why don't you have the number for staff?
I could, I could divide it out if you want. There's no reason. I think people were, were, were more concerned with, with the, with the student percent because the number of staff total wasn't as big earlier when I started this, but I can definitely add that. I appreciate that. Although.
General won't comment like that, but.
Sorry.
But that's all right, I shouldn't respond. And then the next is current, this is as of last week. So I, the current dashboard for the school is week by week. That matches most of the other schools surrounding us. And so you can see the current cases from last week. So this would have been, you know, I did this at like eight this morning. So the current positive for Beatles, Beetle Lake is for Wilds Park has, has nine students last week that became positive. Sonoma for, the middle school had seven, high school had seven for a total of 31 students. And you can see the staff, there was one at Wilds Park, one at Sonoma, one at high school. And then there was one other building, other building could be main transportation administration building. There was four. And then total number of quarantines right below that. I will say the total quarantines is 77 last week. It's about half of what it's been. And I, we think that's because of the test and stay option. So students can do, can test every day and stay in school. We had quite a lot of home test kits for a while. Now that the MDHHS is no longer providing home test kits for test and stay. And so we are going to be testing in school. We have enough test kits to do that, but students would come to school, be tested in the morning before school started. If, and it's parent choice, completely total parent choice. You don't have to choose to do that. If you don't choose to do that, then it's a 10-day quarantine. And then finally, I always have to compare the districts on each time. I'm going to, I'm going to make this bigger so you can see it. So the district comparisons for the districts surrounding us that, that are more like us, you know, size-wise. I didn't put Athens there surrounding us too. But Harper Creek, he said 348 positive cases, Marshall 151, Lakeview 346, Battle Republic 226 and Pennville 302, and that was from their websites. And then they also have their quarantine numbers with the exception of Battle Republic that has not publicized their quarantines. So you can see where each district lies. And then the proportionate, so I just did a quick proportion. If everybody was the same size as Harper Creek, this is how many positives that they would have. So we'd be at 340, Marshall 154, Lakeview 228, Battle Republic 165 and Pennville 408. And then the proportionate of quarantine, so if everybody was the same size as Harper Creek, you can see what those numbers would, would look like.
Well, do you believe that, that Harper Creek is being, I don't want to say most diligent, but we are being very diligent with testing protocols where other districts may not be as.
Well, I don't know if I'll say that we're diligent. I'll say I think that we are doing more testing than others, other school districts. We've gone through, I believe, as many test kits. When Lakeview was in the test and stay program, because they were in that program about a month ago, they were definitely using a lot of tests. But now they're not in that same program because they have a universal mask, so they don't have to quarantine in classrooms. So they're not testing as much, but I think that we test more than most districts based on my conversation with superintendents.
And then since we've been doing the daily testing over the last, what, two to three weeks, the quarantine numbers, like you said, had dropped by about half. Looks like we're about a two to one ratio.
Specifically this, specifically this week, when I say this week, this past week that happened, we did have a high number, I believe it was a week after Thanksgiving. So I need to make sure that I, that I do clarify that. But in general, it has been lower each week since we started, started the test and stay program. That is true.
So just so, just so I understand that you use school testing. So I mean, it's been, I mean, students have been deemed a close contact as the option to come to the school each day, get tested, and then they go to class if they're positive.
If they're positive, they become, you know, they're, they're listed within our group and then they have a 10-day isolation period. And it's always recommended that they get a, you know, the rapid tests are not as accurate as EPCR tests that you would get out of a doctor's office. We always recommend they do that and again, that is still parent choice, but.
And of course, we have no way, I mean, we can't attribute all of the positive cases to school, right? I mean, we can attribute to many different areas, right?
Yeah. Within the, within the, I guess, the spreadsheet of the entire school year, I've tried to keep track of school and home quarantines. And then you can see that who becomes positive from a school or home quarantine. And no, not all. That definitely our attributed, we have had outbreaks within the school that have been documented by the health department. But no. I don't want to say anything that's going to sway anybody either way. You know, a lot of times if COVID comes into a household, many or most of the people in the household become positive. That seems to happen. That's true. But we've been, also had situations where students have, it appears contracted COVID at school. That is happening too. Just being open and honest. I don't have any specific data other than what I share weekly with the staff as well as the school board, with the county data, that, that comes out every week. We see that, we keep track of that. You have, you can receive data from other folks. You look at those, that data as well. We can see that there is a, there's definitely an uptick of COVID in the state of Michigan. We may be the highest in, in the country at this point. And having all of us need to understand, we need to be as diligent as we possibly can.
Comments, thoughts? Mr. Jason Smith, any name from you?
That doesn't mute here. No, I appreciate the, the comments that the, that the audience has, has made and appreciate the continued updates. Maybe to backtrack just a bit, I, I would agree with what Mr. Barry Smith said in terms of a safety update. I think that going forward would probably be advantageous. But relative to this, I think the public has come out and spoken relative to the COVID situation. I'll, I'll be specific. Seems like they've come out and spoken in terms of choice. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. All right, there's nothing further on COVID-19 data. We'll move right to the sister topic of masking discussion.
Yeah, so each, each board meeting, we have, we have put the masking discussion on. I, again, I want to make sure that I am representing everyone within our district. Every day I send out COVID notifications. I actually personally do that and I receive information back, sometimes usually two or three comments. Many of those comments, those two or three comments on each, each of the days that I send it out are typically saying, you know, we need to do something. Many people are saying that, you know, those people are saying that we need to consider masking. I want to make sure that I am representing, that, you know, the group that is telling me that. And you've also received, I know, some emails. And I do want everybody to know, when the board receives an email, so it can come in different ways. Typically, it comes through the general board email that's on our website. And all board members do receive any email that comes in. Sometimes people send me an email that says, please share with the board. Or some people send me emails and I, I ask people, you, can I share this with the board? So I do all of those things. So your voice is heard on every portion of, you know, this discussion and I want you to be aware of that. The board is seeing and hearing from you as a person.
Any thoughts on masking this time?
I, I guess we're, I mean, I'm, I'm still in the, in the camp of our current policy of masking optional. I guess pairing this up with some of our previous conversations, you know, I'm thankful for the update, safety, safety committee. I think we all agree that there's, there's a lot that goes into keeping our kids safe. Over the past year, we spent a whole lot of time talking about masks. But when I think about all the other things that are realities out there, depression, mental health, bullying, vaping, you know, there's a lot of other things we gotta, we gotta stay diligent, diligent about. We're gonna do this discussion about masking. So I'm happy that we're, we're gonna have the safety update as part of it.
Any thoughts? All right, I'd just say that I remain in, in the camp of, of masking optional. You know, I like the thought of ever having the right to choose, including our, our parents and their respective students. And I, I don't know that we've seen any new data. And I, I don't know that we've seen any new data that would, you know, move us forward with changing things on the masking side of things, so. And then instead, if anyone else has any comments? All right, we'll move on to the music program proposal.
Okay. Few weeks ago, we got a group of stakeholders together, well, first of all, before we did that, I sat down with our current directors of music. And we had a, just a conversation about the music program and ideas for the future, what we could do to improve, what we could do. And when I say improve, improve participation, improve quality, you know, the, the whole gamut. And then we had a meeting with stakeholders, and I thought that was really good. We met for a couple hours, and we talked about a lot of things, and lots of good ideas, some things that I knew, some things I did not know. And I think that there were some passionate people in the room that really wanna see our music program, you know, be as best as we possibly can. And so I created, from the discussion, a proposal, I shared it with the board so that you could take a look. I'm gonna hit the highlights for the, the people that are here in attendance. First of all, music directors, we currently have two full-time music directors, we did have three. Mr. Eric Hansen had retired as our choir director. Our two current full-time directors have expertise in instrumental music, not in vocal, although they are both qualified and certified to do vocal. And, and are doing a good job of that at this point. They do recognize, for us to build a program, we need someone that's concentrating on vocal music. And so the first part of the proposal would be to hire a full-time choir director. I think that is imperative, it's also imperative we get the right person, we make sure that we find someone that's gonna be able to build the program. Mr. Hansen did a really nice job of, of having a quality program and large participation numbers, and that's what we wanna see continue. Another thing that we talked about was a concern with integrated arts that we had began this year, and what does that mean for music? Are we getting enough music education at the elementary agents? And so one of the things that we talked about is that directors would sit down with and help the integrated arts teachers understand the imperative. I'll call them power standards, we're gonna use the same language, that our students in K through four need to have to be successful and build programming when we get to middle school. Other things that we, that I heard that were imperative, the exposure to the arts. Here at Harper Creek, we don't have as much exposure to the arts as we'd like to see. And the parts that I did not know, or, or avenues that we could do better with, is community partnerships. We have organizations currently in Battle Creek, and in the Kalamazoo area, in the, in the general area, that will come into school to do music education. And we actually talked a little bit broader, we said arts education, but music education specifically to the school. The Kalamazoo Symphony Orchestra is an example, that I know that they're coming to Sonoma Elementary, they came to Sonoma in the past. Well, let's have them come if they were willing to Wildus Park and Beetle Lake. There's other partnerships within Battle Creek that, that we can tap into, Cadillac Community College offered their, their services. We talked a little bit about the Brass Band of Battle Creek, and what services would they offer? They're actually doing an outreach program to specifically high school, middle school age students, but we wanna ensure that our students are exposed. And then the last exposure is our own kids. Why not have our own kids go down to the elementary and perform for them, our middle school kids, our high school kids performing for elementary kids? And we went a step further, and we don't have the details on the plan yet, but we have reading buddies where kids go and read to other kids. What if we had music buddies, where, let's say, a middle school band class goes down to an elementary school, they perform. And then they sit down with an individual elementary student and show them their, their instrument, how it works, they're, they're excited for it, same with vocal music. We, we think that that is, got a lot of legs that could, that could really do a lot of good and be very powerful for the young kids to want to emulate the older kids. And, and making sure that we do that. We know that we need to have a, I would call it a marketing campaign specifically for our fourth grade parents, as they're going into middle school, so they understand the importance of, of music education. They may not understand that the brain development is enhanced with music education. There, there are research studies that show music will enhance specifically mathematical learning, but also scientific learning when, when kids are older. So I think that it is, is critical that we market, we tell people, we help them understand how that's going to work. I could see our administrator staff and our music directors working together to, to, to come up with, here's the information, and then sharing that with parents to say, why is important? And to continue to promote, that, promote that, that importance. And then middle school, we currently in fifth grade have a general music class where they learn instrumental, vocal, and, and all parts of music. In the fifth grade, and all kids take that class. In sixth grade, then kids would make that choice between choir and band. I think that that's critically important, that all of our kids have the opportunity to have music continuing through the middle school. Again, there's going to be a point in time when kids make that choices, we're going to have to educate and help, help people understand what that choice looks like and feels like for their child. I think that maintaining participation is important at the middle school level, because when they get to seventh, eighth grade, now they, they are choosing between other possible interests that they may have. And so we wanna maintain as many kids as we can in the program. I think all of us are impressed when we go to events and we see large groups of people playing or singing as school districts. And we wanna have the same, we wanna make sure that we have that same, that equal participation numbers. If we lose a music student in the seventh, eighth grade, we typically don't get them back in high school, and so we've gotta promote as well as offer fun for, for those kids. Why do you wanna be part of the program? And some of the things I've heard in the meeting was, you know, it's, you're part of a group, you're, you're, you're part of a, I say a team, in that same atmosphere where you're doing something together and you're staying together in your building. And I think that's critically important. And then in high school, the first, the first part is hiring a choir director, I think that's critically important. But the second part is a board, that we can make sure that we continue to offer courses, even when, even if course sizes are low in the, in the beginning. We need to build the program and keep our courses going. I had put specifically four courses, we also, on top of the four courses, which were marching band is an ensemble, so marching band is in the fall, ensemble's in the winter, spring. Jazz band, varsity choir, honors choir. But we've also had a trouble choir in the past, and we've also had a, you know, more of a general type music class in the high school as well. So we wanna build those programs, we guarantee this first four, and then build into the other ones as we have. I see the new director is going into middle school and high school to build the choir program. Our numbers are very high in fifth and sixth grade right now, and we could have two teachers splitting those classes up, and that would help, you know, fill schedules for, for, for our directors. There's a little bit of concern that they would teach outside, outside of music, and hopefully it was popular enough that we had so many kids that, kids that are interested, that we're teaching all, you know, all music classes for those three people. And I hope that we continue that. The last piece, I guess, is just the overall music support in our community, our board of education commitment. You know, we need to commit to music programs financially, I'm not saying that we haven't in the past, but we need to make that sense, that we will commit to our, our music programs financially. One of the things that comes up is uniforms and robes for, for choir. Other things are instrument purchases, some folks, it's a barrier to buy instruments, and we do have programs where people donate instruments. We have some instruments here at the school that we own and maintain, making sure our instruments are maintained, just having all the things necessary to be successful. One of the things I would like to put out there at the table, not to decide tonight, but I think that we should commit somewhere around fifty thousand dollars to our, our uniforms and robe purchases now. We need to buy new band uniforms, and we need to make sure we support the choir as well, so that we're ready, and we're, we're doing that. You know, we're going to support other purchases within the district with our casino bill money, I think that we should, we should do the same. The board has committed five thousand a year that we were banking for uniform purchases specifically for band and choir, but we may have to put upfront some money to buy the uniforms now that are, that are necessary. And then finally, the last piece is community education, making sure that our, our entire community is educated on the importance of, of the arts, and we improve the arts within Harper Creek. We don't wanna, we wanna make sure that we understand the, the appreciation. This is what my, my vision, my vision when I see things are what I actually see. I wanna go to a play like I did last Sunday and have the auditorium completely full of people, like just completely full, bursting at the seams. I wanna go to the band concert, the choir concert, and see the same. And I've seen that over the years here at Harper Creek, and all, in all of those aspects, we just have to make sure that that is important to us. That we're not just getting parents coming to performances, but we're getting lots of people who just want to enjoy and, 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 and see the arts. But part of that is us as a school district promoting ourselves, because I would bet if I asked the audience, did you know there was a school play last weekend? I bet many people would say, I didn't know, I, I just didn't fly out, no. So we've gotta do a better job of promoting, and so I think that's a piece of the buy, that I can do a better job of with our, with, with our communication director. And getting the information from our directors of music and arts, so we know what's coming up, so we can really promote it out there. So that's my proposal for tonight. I think for the board, it's giving me the nod that we are gonna do, hire a choir director. And then as we bring forward budgeting items that we, we consider that we support the arts just as much as we support all the programming, programming in the district.
Motion for the board or just, just the nod or?
No. We, we, when I say we, I, I, myself, and sitting down with the, our two current directors, we're not sure if this is the right time of year to hire them. We wanna get the best person, we wanna have a committee, a, a committed committee to get the best possible person to potentially start next year with that position. That's, that's, that's what I think, I would be, as a board, you could tell me differently, but I think we would be pissed off if we hired a senior school year. Many people won't want to leave in the middle of the year to start a new one, or we have students that will be graduating college, and that typically happens in May, and go through the process. But if we got out front of it, and people knew we were looking, then we could give the best, I think that's, that's another bit of it.
This, I mean, I, I agree with the proposal, I think Rob, you obviously have a lot of passion for this. I guess I do agree that, you know, education and music does, does have the downstream benefit of helping learning in other areas. I think we also got a lot of great resources here in Battle Creek. I just went to the Serial City Concert Band performing at Des Moines, they were fantastic. Those are the gems we'd have right here, that we could certainly look for support of our musical program here in Harper Creek.
I guess the only thing I would say is the stakeholders at that meeting were the passion, they were the ones that were driving the discussion of what we need to do and why it's important. Be perfectly honest with you, they, they were the ones. I wanna be supportive, I, I want us to be the best of everything that we do, but that group of people, I think, always had a lot of passion.
I feel like we're saying passion. Keep it moving forward. Really, really, that's pretty good, this proposal. And I was one of the stakeholders at, at the music meeting, obviously. And I think we really covered what we talked about, you know, at that point. And to your, you know, community involvement, Mr. Warriors wanted to be here this evening, but he was already in American Legion with the choir, promoting the choir director and the league policy. They have a passion over there, so.
We talked about it a little bit too, of community events and the things that we do and we wanna be part of, and they did that at the, I'm sorry. The Harper Creek Optimist Parade, our band is typically the, one of the leads in the, in the play, or in the, in the parade. And, you know, we wanna support that group too, because they're very supportive of all of us. Yeah, but all of us. So really no action, but I want you to know that's the intentions moving forward, so I will be bringing eventually a person to the board. I probably will also be putting within the budget an amount of money. I know that the, the band boosters specifically to start with wanna know how much they can count on, and so I'll have conversations with the group so that they understand what a commitment level I feel I'm going to ask for.
I thought the proposal was well done, and I'm very supportive, just to add my two cents. And I think, you know, your ideas of putting at the choir director sooner than later is a little bit ideal, because if you wait too long, all the good people will be there. Because everybody knows all of the positions are very short.
Yeah, one of the things that we've noticed in hiring teachers in this market is that we do have a clause within our, our contract in which people retire early by March first. They get a little bit of incentive, but that instead of helps us say, okay, we have these jobs open, and we just go at our recruiting and events, and, and they say, we have these jobs available, we can get them home, I agree.
I would say I do like the thought of hiring somebody that's fresh out of school, even though they might not have the experience, they can take a program and build it with enthusiasm. And something they can, you know, create over a period of time, but.
Yeah, well, I, I think having a, a hiring committee, that's, that's awesome, I think that's helpful.
All right, we'll move on to the high school HVAC.
I know Jim talked about it a little bit, the only details that I really have, and I won't go into too, too much, is that the engineering is completing, the bids are gonna go out. I believe in the email, I had said exact dates, but around the end of this week, the bids will go out, it'll go out to bid. Vendors will come and take a look at the school through with walkthroughs, the week we get out of school, so next week. Bids will be due around the first of January, probably the second or third of January actually, but after the holiday. And then there's a post-bid meetings that hopefully we can get done fairly quickly, and then we can bring to the board, this is what we're looking at. On the financial end, this supplier is working with PFM to, to figure out exactly what needs to be in place, or when we get the bids in, and we say, okay, we're ready. Then now we have the financing on the backend, so we can get moving on that. It's probably gonna be an installment purchase agreement, that we borrow money from an entity, and then pay that back over time. We'll decide how much we pay back on an annual basis, to see how long we want that to go. It's not a loan, you can't go, we are not allowed as a school to go to a bank and get a loan like a average citizen. We have to either bond through voting, we have to bond using our own finances, or we can do an installment purchase agreement, that's our choices that we have. And PFM thought that was our best choice for this particular project.
So did Tru, I, I spoke to Tru, and it's actually part of the RFP process.
Oh, so that'll be part of the RFP that we are doing with the bids?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I did not know that, good job.
We, we're figuring that out, it's kind of a figuring out as we go to, I think, right now. But we, we, and actually Todd, Todd McDonald with CSM, and Christopher Ryan Moreno with Tru, got together today, and they're finalizing those documents.
Oh, nice, so it just, I just wanna smooth, we have deadlines and timelines, if we wanna get the HVAC project done for next school year, we're gonna have to make decisions in January. That's just facts of life, and if we can do it, we can afford it, I, I say this board gets it done, because it's, it's been a long time coming, and we actually say, we got that one out of, done, because it's a lot of conservative complaints.
So the drawings are done, as I said earlier, now they're in the writing, the specifications, cleaning those up. And like, like Mr. Ridgeway said, I expect them to be out here in the next few days, so, and then, then once we know that they're out, they'll give them a week or so to look through it, then we'll do the pre-bid walk. So I'll meet myself and folks from SCS, which is our mechanical engineer, they're part of King Scott. And CSM, our construction management firm, will meet together and take the contractors too, so they will actually hand be able to look above ceilings, so there's no surprises and stuff like that, so that we can get accurate bids as well. So that's a very important piece of it, just like, you know, I don't wanna regress the scoreboard, but I have a walkthrough tomorrow with the scoreboard for the pools. And I want all the contractors to, and it's mandatory, so there's no surprises, they are not shocked, and when they come in later, oh, wow, we didn't see this before. So that is very important, and it'll also help keep our costs down. So when it comes to additions and stuff like that, emission, errors and omissions, try to limit it as close as possible as we can.
Thank you. Any further there? Okay, we'll move on to the CDPH health technicians.
Okay, Kalam County Department of Public Health, health technicians. So I had a conversation with the health department about the process it takes to do contact tracing, and the amount of time it's taking away from our staff. Our, specifically our office staff, principals, secretaries, our health aides, that's a part of their job, but it's just, it, when it happens, it overtakes the building for a few hours. And so I asked, what are other school districts doing, and one idea that they had was that. And one idea that they had was that another school district next to us has two school nurses, a little bigger school, and they have three health technicians. And I said, well, what's a health technician? Well, they said, it's not a school nurse, but it's someone that has a health background. So maybe they have some schooling, but they aren't quite there yet as a registered nurse. And so, so what we would do, and this would be sort of on a temporary basis for the remainder of the school year, where we would contract with the Health Department from January to June with two technicians. The cost is, is going to be fifty-one thousand eight hundred eleven dollars, not cheap. We have said all along that we would use federal money where necessary to help our staff, and our school, and our kids. And I think this would help all three, because now our office staff, our principals specifically, will be helping the teaching staff with the business of education instead of the business of contact tracing and testing. We're doing lots of testing, you know, I said that already. And so these folks would help with all of those. So I believe that the Health Department met and they approved hiring two technicians for Harper Creek with the caveat, if we do the same tonight, then they would go through the process. They don't think it'll take long, they're hopeful that they could have people in place right when we get back from the holiday break. That's what they're hoping for. They said they did not have too much trouble hiring those positions in the past. This would be money that would come out of SRS two. And then we actually did, was that right?
SRS three.
Okay, out of SRS three, but we actually put more money in for the next school year necessary. But I'm telling you, and I told the Health Department, we are going to make sure that that it's working for us. We don't just want to commit to a year and a half, we're going to commit to a half a year, and then we'll see where we're at. If it res works really well, then we can commit for the rest of the time. I do want to mention something else that's unrelated, but it came up. Kellum County received a CDC health liaison, and so the Kellum County Health Department decided to give that to Harper Creek, that person at Harper Creek, to help us with our processes. So that's going to be another one that could be helpful. No cost to us, it's just something came from the CDC. That person, I believe, is going to start next week, is my understanding at this point. Now, next week, schools, kids are out, but they can get acclimated, I can have conversations with them. Those board members that have asked, you know, I spend three hours or so on over every day, and so I'm hoping that person will help me with some of that, some of those duties. Because a lot of this is reporting and keeping track of all the data and numbers behind the scenes. And the reason I do it is because it had to be confidential when we first started, so I think that's my point.
And will that position be for the remainder of the school year, or?
I don't know. They didn't say, they didn't say, they think it was a length of time, to be honest. They just said that they're going to, they're going to do it for us for now. Now, let's say that another school district, you know, has surges, they may go to that other district, you know.
How much can you figure yourself up, and the rest of the administration, including principals, from the time you're spending with these two new folks and the?
I think, I think most of them, you know, I would be down to just making sure the callouts happen every day. And then principals would be down to answer. Because, you know, we want our principals to talk to those parents that are really concerned. A lot of times people are upset, their child is quarantined, they don't understand, they want to talk to somebody, you know, that's in charge. And so they would go to that next person, the principal. But typically with the phone calls, you know, these folks would handle that. That's, that's the hope. And our health aides are going to be a beast, because we do have health aides.
I think it'd be good to get you guys back to doing what you're supposed to be doing already, and agents and call the numbers, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good, we can at least try it, and that's what the federal money was for, was to help with COVID, and COVID related expenses.
Any comments? All right, move on to committee updates and start with personnel.
Okay, personnel committee met, three basic things. One, increasing substitute teacher pay. I sent an email out and I made an administrative decision, I hope that was acceptable to the group, but I did. We moved our pay up for every substitute teacher group. We have what we call daily subs, we have district subs, we have retired teachers who sub, and then we have long-term subs, and everybody's rates were increased somewhere between twenty and thirty dollars. And I think that that will be competitive. Not, it may be the highest paid in some categories. I believe that there's one school district near that's paying a little bit more on their daily subs, and we do hope we are competitive with everything else. It has helped us get new subs in, and we're trying to get, you know, new quality subs as well. And all that, that is a big issue for our, specifically our teaching staff. We talked about negotiating additional sick days or COVID days for staff, and you heard that from Miss Forman, but you also saw several emails from staff, specifically the teaching staff that was talking about with the thought processes, having negotiations with them. Some of our employee groups agreed, the number that we said was five, that we would do five initial sick days for every employee in the district. And so, but it's negotiable, so therefore we negotiated with each group. Some groups have agreed to that, and some other groups have not agreed to that at this point. You may ask, what are the districts doing? Some did nothing, they just simply take sick days, and that was our stance to start with, and that was a concern of the board, at least individual members after our last meeting. They had, came to me individually and just said, you know, I don't know, we need to do something, and that was a response to that. But I think we've seen COVID higher than we thought it was going to be. We really thought this year would be better in terms of numbers, but it has not been. And so I think that's warranted, and I will continue to negotiate with any groups that have not settled, and come up hopefully with a fair, fair agreement for that. And then the last piece in the personnel committee, we did talk, we talked about all of our employee groups have increased their pay to be competitive, so that we continue to recruit, recruit, retain employees. We had a group of employees, individuals that happened to be in administration, not principals, or me, but individuals who work in our offices that we had, we had not done yet, and so I have brought forward some contracts, and I talked to the personnel committee about that we were going to negotiate, so that we were competitive with other districts. We don't want to lose some of our good employees because we're working, and we thought that was a good time, because we did that with every other employee in our. Any personnel committee questions? We will start the negotiation process soon with our teachers group, and so you can expect that we will start having, well, the personnel committee first, but then negotiation strategy meetings as a board closed session, as we prepare for that negotiation.
All right, we've got our policy.
Okay, policy. So we talked a little bit about switching public comment from five to three minutes permanently. We went through the Niola policy update, which I'm going to do in a minute, you guys will really like to go through that. But most importantly, Truun policy implementation, I went through the first training on that. I think it's going to be really good, I think it's going to be a pretty seamless process. The first part is, I'm going to meet with the administrative staff that the policies deal with, so that they can help me understand what we are currently doing with the options that we're given. Then it goes to the policy committee, then we'll go through, it's like it's thirteen pages of options. Some are easier than others, but we'll go through the options, with that way, this is what we think, what do you think? And there's going to be a few of them that are going to be board decisions. I'm just going to tell you, there are some issues that I think are only things that the board will have to decide, not necessarily administration, what do we believe in, you know, what should we do? And some of those topics are going to be revolved in around, basically gun control within the school, there are some options that districts have, that's one of those issues. Issues with how, how will a district handle policies regarding transgender students, that seems to be a topic, you know, throughout the country that people are concerned with. So those will be the topics that we'll talk about the policy committee, but then we'll bring forward the whole board for a conversation. Let's discuss them, I'm sure there's other things. The nice thing about the Truun policies is there's much less choices, and it's much more prescriptive, and it's easier for our administration to, to actually apply, and it's also easier for our community to read. We felt like Niola policies were not easy to understand or read. And then finally, the budget committee met, we went through the, the reports that you saw, all the reports that you saw. The only additional thing we talked about was the excess food service fund balance and how we lay spend that. We brought in Mr. Rummanap and Ms. Overmeyer, oh, and John's boss from Charbo's came in. And we just talked about ideas for spending that money. We have several things that we have, that we have ideas on. Everything will have to come to the board for approval if it's over ten thousand dollars. Equipment is easy, but if we wanted to, let's say, renovate one of our elementary kitchens, that would be a big project that we talked about. Talked a little bit about concession stands too, that was something new that came up. We think that that could be an allowable expense to help out our concession stands that need some help. We have quite a good money spend, if you have any misunderstanding. And you might wonder why, as a, an audience member if you're listening, it's because, you know, the lunches and breakfasts are all free, and we are serving many, one of many, many, many more kids. Like, for example, John said, in the past, we might have served three or four hundred breakfasts a day, now we're serving nine hundred breakfasts a day. So it's a lot more revenue coming in for reimbursement than we ever had in the past.
It's a higher reimbursement also than local.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. But it's a, it's a tough problem, because we have to spend this money, and we only have so much money in the house, we've talked about it every year, so. When we get back to paid lunches and paid breakfasts, we can go back to universal breakfasts, like we had started, right before COVID started, so all kids could have free breakfasts again.
Rob, as this problem continues to occur, are we going to start to look a little bit further, already been two, three, four years, as we see these continued access revenues and a long-term plan, you know, maybe tackle one elementary every year, or?
Yeah, that's what I, my, my thought was doing ele, because we did the middle school, the high schools are in pretty good shape, because folks barely knew it, but doing the elementary kitchens, completely updating these down. And with the purpose of having our kitchen staff and cooks cook for our elementary kids instead of having food brought in from the high school. That's always been our goal, and we're cooking more and more and more every year as our equipment is running. So I can for committee updates?
All right, move on to second semester school of choice.
Okay, at this point in time, I recommend that we do not open the school of choice for second semester. I don't think it's a good idea for us to be bringing in more new students in the classrooms, especially with COVID being that one, I hope we're proud of classrooms any more than they already are. We made some commitments to elementary, and if we did school of choice, we would be increasing the elementary classrooms more than they already are. And we don't, I wouldn't say we're going to have low classroom sizes, but really we don't want to have low classroom sizes. So I think we at least have to honor our commitment this year, so that's my recommendation. I know our student count is a high, but I don't think it's a good, it's the right time.
Given the current conditions, I would agree.
Okay, we'll move on to Niola updates.
As you know, we do three readings with Niola, this is the first one, so I'm going to quickly go through the updates. When I say quickly, I want to do them so you understand, but stop me if you, if you have a question. Here we go. The first one is in Dialogue one hundred, and it's talking about the absence of board members, or, I'm sorry, the board members participating virtually. And we've asked every single group, MASP, our own attorneys, what is going to happen on this January first, and they all have agreed that the only way you can participate virtually and vote after January first is to have military, is have military duty. That's the only possible way. You can participate virtually, but you cannot vote, is my understanding of how that would work. Now, another piece of the pie that I want to make sure that we follow, at least the posting requirements. If we have a member that participates virtually, we have to announce that in our posting. Our postings have to go up at least eighteen hours before the meeting, and so we have to have a saying policy that anybody that wants to participate virtually has to get notice prior to that. I would suggest by Thursday, because that's when Sharon usually sends out the board book, and we set the agenda. So in the future, after January first, I'm going to ask that you inform us by Thursday before the meeting to be virtual. You have to do it eighteen hours before, so that would be Sunday morning, right, Sunday-ish? If we do the last minute thing, but I don't think that Sharon or I want to come in and put a posting up at the door on Sunday, but we'd rather have you to listen. But you can't vote if you are virtual after January. Okay, next policy is public participation. There are some changes, you know, there has been board meetings that have lots of public participation, some of it got a little bit adamant, or maybe even violent around the country. We have not had that here, but there is some changes. So they changed some of the verbiage from public comment to public participation, that's easy. I put it inside of the board release, so you can see all of it, but here is the gist, I guess. One is moving from five to three minutes, okay? We already recognize people to speak by the presiding officer, but the providing officer may, and this is, this is new information, interrupt, warrant, or terminate a participant's session when they make comments that are repetitive, obscene, and/or comments that constitute a true threat, i.e. statements that meant to frighten or intimidate one or more specified persons into believing they would be seriously harmed by the speaker or some acting at the speaker's behest. Request any event to stop talking and/or leave the meeting when that person behaves in a manner that is disruptive of the orderly conduct and/or the orderly progress of the meeting. The orderly progress is something new, and some boards were having to adjourn and start a meeting the next day because public comment was eighteen hours, five, six, seven hours, and they were going to after midnight, one in the morning with public comment. And so if it's intentionally harming the orderly business, we would have the right at that point to say, okay, we're going to move on, because we've heard all of the comments. I would warn though, the presiding officer, we never want to take away someone's freedom of speech. We have to be very careful when we want to interrupt if someone is, as we said, being repetitive, obscene, or a true threat. Beyond that, everything else is fairly the same. People can audio or video recording the meeting, that's legal. We ask them to tell the superintendent beforehand. We've had that in the past, before we broadcast our meetings, we had people in the front row that would do Facebook Live, but they just cannot obstruct the meeting if they're wanting to do that. I think everything else is the same as our current policy. Policy thirty-one twenty, employment of professional staff. It basically takes all the highly qualified language out of the policy. Highly qualified is no longer a thing. It was a federal government thing. People have to be licensed and certified, but the highly qualified piece, there is two or three pages of that policy that is crossed out that is old, and that's a legal change, revised. School-sponsored publications and productions is a replacement policy, and Niola is suggesting we form a committee and take some time on this. I am suggesting we don't, because we're going to change policies to Truun soon. I don't think it's worth our time to do it. We have not had issues with our school-sponsored publications. What they're talking about are the new things that are out there on social media, like blogs, or, you know, we do ACTV, those are newish ideas, and we want to make sure that when we do have a policy for Truun, that it makes it so that our administrators and our students understand what the rules are when they can't handle it. So I suggest we don't do anything with that one. Sixty-one fourteen, cost principles, spending the federal funds, you know we have a large amount of federal funds coming, and we talked about that earlier, and there are some details of how you can spend that money that have changed, and so this policy updates those details. One of the details is you have to get permission from the body that is giving you the money, if it's over five thousand dollars. So if you think about all the things that we talked about, most are over five thousand, so we need to submit budgets, and they have to approve them before we can spend them. And that's true with most of our grants anyway, but they set the number at five thousand now for that. Students' fines and fees, basically allows electronic payments, things like credit cards, debit cards, PayPal, Venmo, et cetera, for fines, fees, and charges. So if we wanted to start to open a Venmo account, we could. Actually, Ms. Overmeyer and I talked about that this summer, and I don't know if any school has done it, but we are ready and prepared to do it if we can. And then there is a change, it spells out that a homeless student will not be charged fines and fees. So if we have a student who is homeless, they cannot be charged fines and fees. So that's a change to our current policy, and it's changed to, I believe, the law. Property inventory, very similar revised policy includes new regulations of federal funds for any item costing more than five thousand dollars has to be approved. So if you wanted to, okay, property inventory would be when we take inventory, we have an outside company that does that for us for our larger items in the district, they can track out everything, but we have to get prior approval for anything over five thousand dollars again. Public records, it's an obligation that we do not disclose a student or employee's address when the district receives a participation card, and the policy committee, we looked at us to see what that was, and, you know, we think that if somebody is, let's say, in his protection program, things like that. I think it's, Attorney General is the one that does the disinformation, remember that , right? We looked it up, but. We looked it up last, last year. All right, keep, keep on going. Last piece, personnel files. This policy always allows that our district employees can look at their personnel file. And we will not release a home address or a contact information to a third party without the employee's written authorization. The employee medical records will be maintained in the confidential files separately. And we've done that anyway. But that's, that's somewhat new, I guess, for the policy. And then it outlines procedures for employees to view their policy. Or, I'm sorry, to, to view their personnel file. I think that's it. That's the first reading? First reading, like two more ago. That, that should be the last, I would read the whole thing. I would suggest the board really pays attention to public participation because that's important to our public and you hear yourself. It's spelled out in the board release if you want to have a copy. I'll probably send that to you so you can be, you know, well versed in that.
Is there a changeover to true as well?
Well, it depends. I am hoping for a meeting in February where we say we're ready to move forward. Like the policy committee before it says, okay, we're ready to make it happen and then vote.
Would you care to see how that, that policy particularly marries up with the true policy?
Yeah, it's similar. You had to do choices on minutes and things like that, but I think it's very similar.
All right, move on to new hires.
All right. Let's read that board release. So we have four potential new hires. First, Amanda Bryant, fifth grade teacher, BA three. We had a teacher that left the district, so we had to open her. Melissa Robinson, kindergarten teacher at Sonoma Elementary. She actually would start as an interim teacher at a rate of two hundred dollars a day. And then when certification is obtained, then go to a BA one. The state of Michigan has become much more flexible and people becoming teachers in the classroom. And they give time for people to be in permits before they become certified. We haven't had a lot of interest in, in jobs. I mean, there's not a lot of people applying. And so we are basically, as Laura had said, trying to promote people who want to become teachers within to the organization. Another one very similar, Vanessa Hunt, Spanish teacher at Harbor Creek. She's in the same situation, starting as a interim teacher and then until certificate, then go to a BA one as well. And then finally, Chelsea Ziegler, a student support specialist. That would be at Sonoma Elementary with a prorated salary of thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. We had, we had decided to hire another student support specialist. This person comes highly recommended from, and we really share a lot about the school district in the area. We felt that necessary. We talked about mental health a lot. That's a person that's hopefully going to help rightly with students that are struggling with their behavior. And that's Sonoma.
All right, I'll move on to comments from the audience. Please state your name and address.
I know I can't make a comment about the same thing. Carolina Tapias. So my comment is regarding the personnel retention. I heard about the increase in pay and to be competitive with and hoping that we retain personnel in higher top talent. I heard that there was a pay increase for subs, the district subs and the daily subs. I also, I think I maybe misheard it, but that Mr. Ridgeway was talking that there was, might be a potential increase for the administrative staff. The payoff scale for support, for the support staff, it is something that needs to be talked about. Where the support staff make less than a high school student that can make work in a call or at a tropical smoothie cafe is, I can't even talk about it. And I work as a support staff in this district. And the pay that I get, it is one of the reasons why I resigned. I submitted my resignation about two weeks ago and my last day is this Friday. I love working with the students and I work, and I love working with the staff. I work at the high school. The students love me. The students know me. My, my, my oldest son goes there. My, my daughter, who's currently an eighth grader, is so upset that I'm not going to be there, that I'm not going to be able to make her lunch, which I do for my son, because I work in a special education classroom where we have all of the staff available. We are not competitive with pay for our support staff. I have heard from numerous support staff from the payout that if, why should they care really working here if their pay is so much lower than everywhere else? I heard from one parent saying that she can work at a dispensary and she can make twice what she makes here. And she's been working here for a few years. I've been working here for about two years. And it needs to be talked about. It really does. The pay is outrageous. And that is the reason why we're having the shortage in staff in the bossing department and hiring payouts than any other support staff. We are the ones that are required to tutor students. And we get paid, do you want to know? Twelve dollars an hour to tutor students, to tutor high school students. That is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, here in SCNA, we'll move on to action items. Start with C C D P H health technicians.
It's easy for you to say.
The chair calls for a motion of the Harbor Creek Board of Education approve the contract to the Calhoun County Department of Public Health Technicians effective January twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-two.
So move.
Board?
It's been ruled by Mrs. Alward, supported by Mr. Barry Smith. Do we have discussion? Harry, SCNA, please call a roll.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Myers, Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Martin, I vote yes, and Mr. Bass.
I vote yes.
Okay, motion carried, section zero.
All right, move on to second semester school of choice.
Mr. Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion of the Harbor Creek Community School Board of Education decline participation in schools of choice, section one oh five for the second semester of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Move.
Support.
It has been moved by Mr. Barry Smith, supported by Mrs. Alward. Do we have discussion? Rob, what would we maybe know and pick up during that timeframe?
Uh, ten students. I remember asking, you know, Gail Brannan when she was working here that day. Usually it was around ten. It wasn't a large influence.
And we don't, we don't worry, do you have ten percent of school funding? Or do we, do we have somehow getting?
Oh, the, the spring is ten percent of the school funding and the fall is ninety percent.
All right, any further discussion? Harry, SCNA, please call a roll.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Chair.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carried, section zero.
All right, last action, I have a new hire.
Chair calls for a motion of the Harbor Creek Board of Education approve the following contract. Amanda Bryant, fifth grade teacher, Harbor Creek Middle School, BA three. Melissa Robinson, kindergarten teacher, Sonoma Elementary School, until interim teaching certificate is obtained, then BA one, two hundred dollars a day. Vanessa Hunt, Spanish teacher, Harbor Creek Middle School, two hundred dollars a day until interim teaching certificate is obtained, then BA one. Chelsea Ziegler, student support specialist, Sonoma Elementary, prorated for one hundred twelve workdays at thirty-one thousand eighty-three dollars, otherwise salary of fifty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight. All pending satisfactory completion of contractual and personal requirements as recommended by central administration.
So move.
Your order.
It's been moved by Mrs. Alward. Think Dr. Borders got in? We're in first. All right, and do we have discussion? Harry, SCNA, question?
Do we have support for a century long school?
So we actually have, we have two, have you like, we have two, Sonoma and one at Long Park. And it's based on E-Base. I'm sure that allows me to ask.
All right, please call a roll.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mr. Myers, Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, I vote yes, and Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Okay, motion carried, section zero.
And we think we want to see them for the next meeting.
Just the ongoing safety.
And I want to apologize to Dr. Borders that I didn't cut the gentleman off. It was too careless. I was taking notes and looking down at the headlights. He was specifically affecting you, but it was not appropriate and my apologies. All right, with that being said, we adjourn at nine twenty-seven.